Okay, we will officially call the City of Niswa Regular Council Meeting on Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to order at seven oh five P M. And if we can start with the pledge. Okay, before we get to item B, approve the agenda, I just want to state, so we had continued the two thousand and twenty-six Budget Workshop, which was a part of our special council meeting at five to the regular council meeting. But best practice is to have items published on the agenda, especially when it's something as important as the first discussion around the budget. So I'd like to see if council might have availability where we could reconvene in a special meeting to discuss the budget, perhaps on Monday, August twenty-fifth at five P M.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Please don't call it a special meeting, though. You'll just continue this.
Continuation, yes.
Different date, yes. So then you'll dispatch with notice requirements, et cetera.
I'm good with five P M.
Bruce.
On the twenty-fifth.
How do your, Bruce, how does your calendar look?
Pretty open.
Okay. Okay. I found some numbers on.
Pretty open. I'm pretty open to it.
Okay. Joe, okay. Good? Okay, um, before we, for the agenda, before we approve, I have one addition. Under G New Business, item twelve, if we could add the following item, authorize acceptance of sewer easement for Niswa Auto. So that would be under G, G New Business, item number twelve. If there's no objection, we will continue forward in that regard. All right, now, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda with the additional new business item just added?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented and discussed.
Do we have a second? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda, amended agenda is approved. Next up is a consent calendar. Again, just a notice to public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will all be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion. Do we have an agenda or a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. Next up is open forum. So for the open forum, please limit your comments to two minutes. Please approach the microphone, sign in and state your name and address for the record. After being acknowledged, speakers will be limited again to two minutes to deliver their comments. Those speaking are asked to conduct themselves in a respectful manner as they deliver their comments. Audience members are asked to refrain from reacting to comments. The city council will not respond directly to comments in this venue or take immediate action in response to them. Do we have any folks that would like to come forward for the public comment period? Oh, and I'm not being disrespectful to anyone, but I'm gonna keep a timer, so I'll just like let you know. Maybe I'll give like a one-minute warning and a thirty-second and let you know.
My name is Andrew Mendez. My address is sixty fifty County Road thirteen.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay. A government's first duty is to protect the safety of its students, of its citizens. Here in Niswa, the city council is failing to meet this very special priority because they are ignoring the largest public health crisis that is currently facing the city, the mental health crisis. According to the Minnesota Department of Health, in two thousand and twenty-two, one in four people suffer from a mental illness, with four point five percent of people at such a high risk for suicide, they should be hospitalized. That means our population of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven people correlates to eighty-nine people who are at such high risk for suicide that they should be in the hospital. This is a massive crisis that is enough to actually fill this room and all our seats three times what it is currently at. Now, a large proponent of this is because of the shortage of providers. Currently, there are only one provider to every thirteen thousand five hundred and nineteen patients, and at twenty percent of people who are mentally ill are unable to get any access to care because of the shortage. So if we all just sit here and do absolutely nothing, we're going to actually see someone die. So I urge you all to find ways to try to solve this crisis and to bring all of our heads together. And I propose that we make a mental health task force, and we can bring this up at another meeting, Mental Health Task Force or Committee to try to solve this crisis, so that it is an ongoing issue for us to try to address it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone else that would like to come forward for a public comment? Going once, going twice? Okay, we will close public comment. Next, we have reports. So we'll start with our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, of various typical tasks in the last month, working through some zoning matters. Nothing specific to report. I'm here for any questions.
Do we have any questions from the council for Tom? Tom, thank you. Okay, next, we'll do a report from our city engineer, Bill.
Good evening. See, I've been working on the Gull Lake Trail construction. We're probably about sixty-five percent complete. And you can see, we have the pay app in the council agenda today. The other thing is working on Niswell Lake Park. Topo has been completed. We're laying out the geometry for the park, trying to figure out where the bathroom will go and all those different things. We're gonna meet with Amber tomorrow, about one o'clock, to talk about where we're kind of coming up moving early and I don't know if we'll have a cost estimate by then, but we're coming up with, trying to come up with the layout. The other thing is, we're working on is the two thousand and twenty-five Street Improvement Project, working with Tom here to get the easements completed and coming up with the next step in order to move forward and get the plans and specs done for two thousand and twenty-six. Oh, City Hall Street and Niswa Avenue and Church Street. Our survey crew, you've probably seen them out. They've been out surveying Church Street and City Hall Street and Niswa Avenue. From what I understand, they'll be done and we'll be able to have the topo by the end of this week. And then we can start coming up with, going through the process and getting the thirty percent plans and coming up with the ideas.
Good. Does council have any questions for Bill?
I do. Bill, when was that information due back to Tom and Public Works for the, for the two thousand and twenty-six road bond?
Like the easements and stuff?
Correct.
Um, well, we didn't, we didn't necessarily set a specific date. We got most of the stuff back. All that's left to get back to him is Upper Roy Lake Road. We've spent time trying to reduce the, the construction limits, pull them in so that we don't have as many easements as we would have probably had, had we have not refined our design during this process. Otherwise, we would probably have in twice as many or pretty much an easement along the whole roadway instead of a much reduced. So we tried to shrink the construction limits in, so we have, we have less to acquire through this process. But most, other than Upper Roy Lake Road, which is very close to being submitted to Tom, is in his hands.
Does that include the street improvements as well for out here?
For?
City Hall Street, Niswa.
No. Well, City Hall Street, that process involves, we're just, right now, where we're at is collecting the information from the topography with the topographic survey, and then from there, we'll go through and determine, you know, kind of come up with a preliminary plan, kind of go through a process of like a graph, kind of what ideas we're gonna do for City Hall Street, Niswa Avenue and Church Street. And then from there, work forward with staff and everyone to come up with what we think the concept should be for those streets.
I understand.
So the idea with that was just to get that done. I don't remember exactly what we wrote in there, but, you know, this fall.
Okay.
Well, my concerns are getting it in soon enough so we can set our preliminary.
Yeah, it feels like we're running out of time.
We are, because if it doesn't come in now, what's that? Push it off. I, I, so that's my concern. Anyway, we need all the information for the, so they can go to Tom. So we can look at the costs, like we, you know, and everything, so that we can put that into the levy, but.
Bill, I, I think I'd like to request just a meeting as being liaison to Public Works between you, me and Tom, so we can try to get a clear idea of path forward, so we know where we're at on, on all of these projects. Perhaps next week even, so we can connect offline here.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
Oh, council member freely, do you have something else?
Keith might be, want to be in on that meeting too. I think he should be, but let's just.
Sorry, I was looking down, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Bill. Um, old business. Roy's Landing Project, a recommendation from the Planning Commission. So we need a council motion here, so I'm just gonna call this out again. We need to have a motion in a second, then we can call up the city planner, and then we can open it up for discussion. So I trust everyone's had a chance to look through the packet. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I might recommend, I recommend a different sequence for that.
For this one?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Might entertain the discussion, including either an overview from Stephen, or I can certainly give it to whatever, but.
Yep. Okay, Stephen, why don't you approach?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the Planning Commission was tasked with a review of an additional topographic divide proposal from our city engineer staff at Woodseth. An evaluation of whether or not we would want to re-determine the topographic divide that was established back in two thousand and twenty-one for the plat of Roy's Landing. The topographic divide that was established then followed the twelve thirty-six contour. And that was established using the means available to us at the time, using lidar technology. The applicant had come forward for a meets and bounds subdivision, which could not proceed without re-determining that divide. And so he, and being Jethro Carpenter here, had tasked his authorized agents, surveys and engineers to go out and do a drainage assessment. That drainage assessment was in front of the Planning Commission back in November and resulted in a recommendation to deny that request for a change in the topographic divide. That moved forward to city council where it got tabled and resulted in Woodseth going out and taking their attempt at establishing that topographic divide. So they have provided two pre-road construction and two post-road construction topographic divides for this plat. Recommendation that I provided to the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment at their most recent meeting was to adopt either of the pre-road construction determinations provided by either the applicant's agents or by Woodseth versus the adoption of post-road construction. It's because that would consider the anthropogenic features of the landscape being the man-made alterations of the road. In any case, these more recent evaluations are proposed based on current ordinance language, and the work had been completed by licensed and certified individuals in their fields of expertise. So that would be my recommendation. If the plan, if the city council were to redetermine it to go with either the pre-roads, but the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment has provided a recommendation to uphold the denial for the request for a topographic divide change, so. There you have it.
Tom, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Just a second. Can I, can you pull that information up and put on the screen so we can all see what you're talking about?
It gets on page ninety-four of the packet.
Want the map?
Yeah, just maybe the map that Stephen's referring to.
You can go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. To remind the council, when this request first got made for a revision to the former topograph or to the current topographic divide determination from two thousand, I think nineteen, the Planning Commission considered it and made a recommendation to you to deny that, which then started more conversation around analytics, gathering more information. Ultimately, we all know resulted in the applicant agreeing to pay for Woodseth to be hired by the city to do its own independent evaluation. I'll let the smarter people on that, on the analytics, speak to what it means if you have questions. This did come before the Planning Commission. As you see from the minutes at its most recent meeting, they did consider all of the information, including the most updated Woodseth information, and did make a recommendation to you to deny the request. So that's the posture now, in front of you for a decision now, about whether to grant that application and make a determinate, determination to change the topographic divide or to uphold the Planning Commission recommendation to you to deny that request. If, and I'll say this now, even though we're at the start of a conversation, if, if it's, if it becomes the council's pleasure by motion here to change that determination, then I'm gonna ask you to continue that agenda item to the next. You can make your motion if you do that, and that becomes your decision. But then Stephen and I would need to work on some findings for you to adopt at your next meeting that would be in concert with a motion of that sort. So that's front-end stuff for the back end when you ultimately make a decision, but I wanted to get that in now.
So the proper process would be to have a motion in a second and then to have discussion. And I believe there are some folks here in the audience that probably would like to come and make a comment to council, so. Do we have any motion?
Before we have a motion and more discussion, does everybody understand that map and what we're looking at, or do we want Stephen to explain it?
Stephen, could you explain that map a little further?
Uh, yeah, so the, can I approach the screen?
Yes.
So this twelve thirty-six. So this is the top graphic divide that was determined by the city and approved by the D and R. Label here is the pre-construction photograph divide for both Westwood and for W S N, W I D. Over here, along this parcel line is the post-construction photograph divide line. As you can see, twelve thirty-six power is at the top of the topography. I don't know, it's just gonna have additional graphic line, the slope here, and then the power is open up and have more space and things, so it's much more of a ladder. So I think about the ten, and a selection by say eight, that D and R in the past, and then. That'll escape a little bit better in the colored format, as to which one is actually switching all of the pickle. So the ones in color here have more, I guess, engineering surveying behind their. And less of a conservative approach for determination of it. And so they kind of run in very much perpendicular to each other in all cases as it relates to the two thousand and twenty-one determination. The different methodology was used. In this case, we have more surveying and engineering for a drainage study in either of the colored ones. And again, my recommendation would be to consider the pre-road construction as opposed to post-road construction because of the environmental impacts that can come from, you know, changing topography and the repercussions that could come forward from considering that and establishing a topographic divide. From that, I suppose I'd open it up to the applicant or engineers to talk about more of the nitty-gritty details as it came for establishing these different divides.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Tom.
Stephen, by clarification, when you just made that suggestion about pre-road construction or, yeah, pre-construction topographic divide, and when you made that recommendation, to be clear, that's only if the council decides
Correct.
to deny the Planning Commission.
If, if we would move forward with determination of any new one, I would err on the side of the pre-road construction as opposed to either of the post-roads.
And if the council decides to uphold the Planning Commission and deny this application, then all of that is moot.
Correct. Thank you for that.
Okay. Does anyone need further clarification, or are we ready for a motion?
We want to make a motion before we hear from either party.
Well, the proper way is, the way we should do it per Robert's rules is have a motion in a second, and then we open it up, and we can hear from whoever would like to speak, and then council can, you know, listen to everyone and then make their comments, ask additional questions to make sure that everyone feels very educated, knowledgeable, has a good grasp of everything, and feels like they have all their questions answered to be able to make an informed vote and decision.
I'll take a stab at making a motion. I'd make a motion that we deny the planning commission's recommendation to deny this and that we look at what W S N has presented their facts of finding for, for this property.
Do we have a second?
Um, sorry, with the version of pre-construction, yes, pre-construction version.
So, so I kind of got confused on that motion.
Do you want to repeat it, Joe?
That we would deny the planning commission's recommendation to deny changing it and that we would look at going with W S N's determination of pre-construction facts of the line. facts of the lines. Yeah, finding a fax with the line.
It basically agreeing to redetermine the topographic divide determination.
Yep.
Yeah.
To consistently with Seth's analytics here based on pre-construction.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, now uh we can go to discussion. Stephen, do you have anything else to add for council that you feel might have been missed or anything else you want to add?
Not at this time, but I'm here for questions if you have any.
Okay.
Could I just ask one question? Stephen, Stephen, can you cover um? I I there was some discussion at the planning commission about uh extra lots, um additional land. Um, if that would be the case, would that have to go through any additional process or by the mere approval of this motion, would it uh automatically grant um additional lots or land usage?
No, so the topographic divide is the only thing on the agenda tonight. Uh subdivision would have to go through its own administrative proceedings for review. So um lot splits are not on the, not on the table at this time, only a topographic divide redetermination.
Thank you.
So.
Sorry, sorry to add that. I keep inject injecting myself here, but but yes, you need to determine this just based on what's in front of you. But everybody knows the way the application went, that the next thing is coming depending on what you do here. And as Stephen pointed out, if you change this, which would enable that second application for an administrative lot split, and that's an administrative process that won't come before the planning commission, it won't come before you. That's completely Stephen's purview at that point.
So this lot split, if I, if I may, would uh be in front of the planning commission for review. Um, if that was something to come forward, but this topographic divide was just one of the hurdles that the application would be evaluated against. The topographic divide establishes lot size minimums as it relates to width and available area, things like that with riparian lots. So um that is indeed a separate discussion.
Okay, let's um start with if there's any council questions for Stephen before we open it up um to the public. So council member Hall, do you have any questions or additional comments for Stephen?
Just comment to clarify the original, what I found out at the last plan commission, the original line that was taking off, taken off the county G I S mapping online for that determination, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. They utilize LiDAR uh contours to establish and determine which specific LiDAR contour was the topographic divide to move forward with plat review.
Yeah, I just.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, council members on.
Have nothing.
Um, council member London, council member Fraley? Okay. Uh, Tom, do you have something else?
Did you have a second to that motion?
Yeah, we did. Jesse, council members on did.
The only other thing I would ask Stephen clarify about this, but i- if if a determination, if a motion is passed now to deny planning commission and grant the application for a new topographic divide. If the council does that now, then that will go to D N R for review.
Correct. That would be the next steps that you talked to uh about continuing this under that guise, that then we could go and draft that resolution to be approved by council at the next meeting.
The only, only once you act, if you do, will the D N R review it and then who knows what they'll do, but yeah.
Okay, council members on.
But the D N R has not been contacted yet.
They have been contacted and notified, you know, for.
I'm sorry, I I I should clarify, the D N R hasn't responded yet.
They responded. They take the approach that they're not going to uh get involved in and overstep city's authority and taking the first step to prove, you know, redetermination.
Okay, anything else for Stephen before we open it up from council? Okay, um, I suspect there are folks here who would like to a- address council on this specific issue. Um, what I'd like to ask, because it might be a few people, um is if we could try to limit to like three-ish minutes or so. Um, and if you'd like to come forward and address council, please just come to the microphone and state your name and um address.
It's up to you. The applicant Jethro Carpenter. So I don't really have too much to say. I'm not going to bring up too much time. Um, outside of the fact is we, there is a top craft divide determined by the city planner at the time that probably is not her expertise of doing divides, which I don't believe that she did intentionally. I just think she didn't exactly understand and the D N R stance on everything is is they're going to essentially not get involved just like this unless you are generally defying the rules of that are the requirements of what the D N R's minimum are. They don't get involved. Um, and Bill could probably answer more, but you can't hardly contrast them more than what it is. Like, it isn't any of the colored ones, right? Clearly wrong. Almost completely irrational than what was determined originally. And previously the council came up to the property and was able to see it firsthand. To just generally get an understanding. We're just here, we want to make sure that this is done right. I um when we agreed to the deal um to have it uh redone by an independent party, I believed at that point in time that they were doing it in good faith that if uh determination was similar to what we had before, that that would make sense. So that's why I agreed to it in good faith that the city would be fair on the deal and wanted the full information, didn't want to just go along with it. They wanted to get it right, not just get it done. So. That's essentially what I have to say. You're going to hear a couple of things from people that use a different method and this and that, but the these are people that are unlicensed, unprofessional, that tend to have a agenda of what they want to see. So they come up with reasons why um we had professional licensed engineers review this deal to make sure it just didn't get done, but it got done right. That's all I'll just say. Unless you guys have any questions for me?
Does council have any questions for Jethro? None?
Nothing, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Are there any other individuals that would like to address the council?
Here, council, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Paul Asmussen. I live at twenty-five two-two-one Bass Lake Road. I sent you a letter uh today. I I trust you've received it and you read it. I'm not going to go through all of it, but I think I tried to outline the issues and why I believe you should agree with your planning commission who has looked at this issue twice. They are the expert that you rely on and deny this application to redetermine the topographic divide. I guess I am the non-licensed person that Jethro was referring to. But I ask that this, this, the, the decision here today. Mr. Carpenter suggested that the original topographic divide was somehow made an error made by someone who was not experienced, and that just is not the fact and is not the case. Mr. Carpenter and his professional professionals, surveyors and um engineers were involved in the decision in the discussions of the determination of topograph, topograph divide at the time of the plat review. It was an important issue at the time and they understood the ramifications and they were involved and the city pla- planner also went out to the D N R and got their concurrence and their agreement in the determination. To come back a couple of years later and decide that different methods should be used so that he could sneak another lot in the plat is just inappropriate and sets the wrong precedent. If the determination had been made at the time and Mr. Carpenter could have presented this analysis, he could have presented the additional engineering and survey results. He did, he chose not to, but he could have. If he had and the determination was made that this was a topographic divide, then planning commission would have had that information available while it was approving the plat. And the ramifications of having additional lots on Roy would have been considered. And it would affect it and it changed the outcome of the plat decisions such as the common access on Roy Lake. And the at the shape of this lot, which you don't see the whole lot, it actually goes out, there's a strange uh tail on it to give it access to the common road. Now they have two lots which do not meet code with no driveway access, no public road. And that's really why this was all done also to avoid building a public road. Could you s- put on the earlier picture of the uh topographic divide? I believe it's the page one oh one of your.
Hall, I don't want to cut you off, but we're almost at.
Point, yep, okay. But the decision here is which method is better. The assumption is that because the second method presented by Mr. Carpenter has a lot of more technical survey information is better. Let me show you a really absurd result of using the second book uh result. It's one oh one of the PDF of the, of the packet. What it does is it takes, if you take up the continuation of the topograph divide. Oh, no, is that going to have an edit? Where is the top graph by? Here?
It's just not.
Yes, I think this is it. That this should be called. But here's the top graph divide that you're considering to adopt. This is a cabin on Bass Lake. This, the road to Roy is here. Roy is here, Bass is here. It's a cute keep of Bass Lake. Your methodology, Mr. Carpenter's methodology, they're checking, we'd sit in here now, we put this cabin, which is on Bass Lake, actually on the way late. It's absurd result. My point is, the original method is most appropriate, facts and circumstances of this lane and and that's what the planning commission decide using inside critiques. The use of this method presented by Mr. Carpenter, which does rely on additional survey technology doesn't end up with the better result, the best result for this land under the facts and circumstances. And that's just one example. So your decision has to be what method is the best? The original method, which was properly determined by the city council, reviewed twice, approved by the D N R for Mr. Carpenter's method, which works out well for him to add another lot to his development, which was not considered during the original planning commission or review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you want to state your name and address.
Brad Berkland, nine seven two Bass Lake Road. First, by default, this, that, when, I believe when Jethro purchased this property, the topographic divide had already been set in place. If if it, by the time it was administratively approved, it was, it had been done. This, the intention of NISWA was to make a long-term topographic divide that would last throughout a long period of time, not just for one individual owner and change every time. Every time another home is built, every time more trees are cut down, more impervious surfaces are introduced. This method that was used with the D N R, Danny McNeil physically walked the property. They determined that the road, the Bass Lake Road was not uh whatever the anthropomorphic structure, that was not a divide. Somebody at some point just had assumed that that parallel Bass Lake Road was a divide between the two lakes, so everything to the right would have been Roy Lake, everything to the left, obviously not up by Bass Lake. That was incorrect. It was never even brought to the D N R. I contacted the D N R for other questions and I brought this up to them and they said, oh, no, this, by default, the entire property is subject to the N E standards. They, they did not have any right to just assume that there is a topographic divide, whether or not it's a drainage divide. It has to be approved by the D N R. So, I mean, when the lot was purchased, you were just assuming that you were going to get, you were assuming uh there was a previous developer that came in and changed the uh whatever the land use, changed it from open space to another one, but they did not ever check in this. This is a state rule that could have been checked by the developers team before you purchased with a quitclaim deed to buy a property that you didn't know how many lots could have been developed. Now this, it was totally proper. They they consulted Cliff Bentley, the D N R, the regional D N R uh land use specialist out of Two Harbors. They consulted Dan Patrick out of Saint Paul. This process was stopped. It was well thought through. They went and determined. They wanted, they looked at NISWA's comprehensive plan. They wanted to keep the sensitive areas of this property. They wanted to somehow use that as their, as their dividing line for this topographic divide. NISWA does not have to use the method that says it's literally which way the water flows. They can do whatever they want. By default, again, there is, it, all, any standards apply to all of them. So NISWA.
We're at about the three-minute mark.
So NISWA basically did what they had the right to do. It was approved properly by the D N R. The intention was not to ever come have this brought back to the council and redetermine every time the land changed ownership or there's a new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this topic?
Dave Anderson, nine twenty Bass Lake Road, and uh thank you for letting me speak for a minute or two. I feel it's really important you take seriously what your planning commission does. I know it's hard for you to all understand everything that happens in the city and all the things that come up to make a solution and recommendation, but these guys are doing a heck of a job and the previous two administrators did also really understood this thoroughly. And I know, I realize you're busy, but by golly, this is what you have them for, is to come up with good recommendations with good, sound reasons why something should or should not happen. And I think you heard pretty clearly, it was voted no. And I think we should listen again and reconsider that vote that's been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Okay, I'll go back to council for one last pass if there are any additional questions, comments, thoughts before calling the vote. Anybody? No? Okay. Why don't we repeat the motion just one last time so everyone's clear on it?
I make a motion to um deny the planning commission's um denial of changing the uh divide line and to look at approving the data provided by W S N that shows the topographical delo- divide line pre-construction um as the divide line.
Okay, um, we'll do a roll call vote for this. So uh council member Hall, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Council members on.
Yay.
Council member London.
Yay.
What was that?
Nay.
Nay? Okay, council member Fraley.
Nay.
What'd you say?
Yes.
Oh, you both said it. I knew you guys were going to do that. How about yay? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Um, the next item under old business is discussion regarding public works committee, liquor committee and personnel committee liaisons. Um, since there's not necessarily a council motion with this, I'd like to make a recommendation um because this would be a part of the organizational assessment, which um we're going to do. I know Keith is working on that uh and we're looking to do that in a closed session with council. Um, if council is amenable to it, that we have that discussion at the tail end of our workshop strategic planning session on September eighteenth. If that works for everybody, we don't necessarily need a motion. Counsel. Good? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Oh, it's, we'll discuss it all. Okay, um, the first item under new business is a request for council action um for the twenty twenty-five audit quote and recommendation. Um, Maggie, I believe that is you.
Yes, thank you. Um, I am recommending to go back to uh Schlener Winner as our audit firm for the two thousand and twenty-five year end. Um, they have been great to work with and just personally, due to all the changes in the office, I would like to have some consistency as we move forward. I would like to have some consistency as we move forward um for our year end.
Okay, do we have a motion? Thank you, Maggie.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to uh accept the request for the twenty twenty-five audit quote recommendations for Schlener Warner, Wenner as presented.
Say it.
Any additional questions um discussion for Maggie from council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Um, next up under new business is a memo from Chief Shemansky regarding body worn, uh body worn camera audit results.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, in your packet there, you have the results of our body worn camera audit, which is required to be done every two years by an independent auditor. Uh, only discrepancy noted was a subdivision of a statute that was left out of a policy. Um, as noted in the report there, that was corrected prior to the final report being done. And everything is in compliance now.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to uh accept the memo regarding the body worn cameras and the audit results as presented.
Say it.
Uh.
That's a tie.
That's a tie, yeah.
I heard Joe first.
Okay, you can write Joe then. Um, any questions, discussion from council for Chief Shemansky? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Next, uh, Public Works request for council action, a pickup purchase, Tom.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so this is a, this was a budgeted purchase for twenty twenty-five. Um, bear with me a second while I find it in the packet. And.
Maggie?
Well, I'm asking you to approve the purchase of a shop pickup truck. Um, I'm recommending purchasing a twenty twenty-six Ford F two fifty from Kimber Creek Ford in Pine River. I got quotes from two dealers who administered a state contract, uh Midway Ford and Dodge of Burnsville. Um, both of them are, one was higher priced uh than Kimber Creek and the other one was not what we were looking for. I also sought uh bids from local dealerships, uh Mills Ford, Tanner Motors and um Don Linger and only Don Linger um provided me a quote and they were also higher than the Kimber Creek quote.
I love the word said on the line item, the Dandy discount. Well, the Dandy discount wasn't low enough, obviously.
Um, so just to give you an idea what the budget impact will be for this, um it's under, under the uh budget number, uh budget was forty-nine thousand two fifty-one. Uh, we would be purchasing this truck for forty-four, five twenty-six. And with that, I would uh look for uh approval of that. And um just to uh also make you aware that we would likely be selling the twenty twelve F four fifty. And that would come off of this purchase price, so.
Do we have?
Yeah, I make a motion to buy the truck as stated on the quote. Um, and also sell the F four fifty on govdeals.com.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion or questions for Tom? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all right, Tom, next is your uh Public Works request for council action, hole in the day sign.
All right, I don't know how many of you are aware of this sign, it's down by Matt's lumber. Um, at least the frame that's holding it up is about to fall over and the sign itself is faded, it's peeling, it's wore out. Um, so I guess what I'm asking is, do you want to continue to have that sign there or if you would like to replace it? I have a quote here uh to replace it, uh just to give you an idea of what kind of a budget you would have to allow for or replace that. Just looking for some feedback if you want to replace it as it exists today or if you would like to have some new artwork done. What would you like to do?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Um, I was gonna suggest that, um, there's so much rich history in that area of Niswau in regards to Chief Holanday, Chief Holanday Junior, especially with now the addition of the park right on the other side of Holanday Bay uh lake. Um, my thought, Tom, on it was definitely main, will replace at a bare minimum and knowing the, the price and the quote you have there, but perhaps maybe even amplify it a bit to have some sort of advertisement to push people or at least make known that we have that new park on the other side of that lake. Cause for anybody that's taken the luxury of going down the trails uh on uh, Amber, forgetting the name of the park and I'm really sorry. Thank you. Uh, it's fantastic, it, it really is and it's uh, it, it's such a neat area. The Native American history there is rich, it's, it's long, it's, it's storied. Um, so I'd be in favor of seeing uh perhaps an enhanced design uh with the signage and to uh perhaps even consider some advertisement to be able to get some traffic to our new park.
Sounds like, is that a motion?
Well, well, I, I would like to add to that as a science keeping it, but uh working with parks to keep the theme.
Let's, we need a motion and a second.
I know.
So was that your emotion, form of motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, additional discussion, council member Fraley, did you have additional?
Yeah, that's my additional is, is, is to work with Amber, so we get, we have a theme. I think Amber's working on a theme for signs for parks or, uh, because we want to keep them all consistent throughout the Niswau. But yeah.
Nothing, anything further, council member Hall? Okay, nothing additional for Tom, Tom, do you have something else?
Just a quick question, so I'm, worked, I'd worked with Sign Spot for the uh quote that I've got. Um, would you be okay if I continue to work with them as far as redoing the artwork with Amber?
It may go up.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, all right, Tom, Public Works request for council action, sale of Onan portable backup generator.
Yes, um, so this was a request by our sewer operator, Mike Deck, that I uh looked into uh asking for permission to sell this, uh, this is a generator that we um we've actually bought another portable generator a few years ago and a much newer one and much quieter. Um, we're finding that since we've purchased that one, we don't use this one enough to warrant keeping it around and the expense of keeping it uh ready for emergencies, so um we'd like to put it on govdeals for sale and uh just looking for approval to do that.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve a public works request for the sale of the Onan portable backup generator as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion or questions for Tom? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Um, next up is the Parks request for council action, trail realignment.
Good evening, thank you. Um, so before you tonight, you have a quote for a small portion of the Gull Lake Trail uh realignment. Currently, there is a section where there's a structure adjacent to the trail and we do not meet the two foot clear zone. So what's before you tonight is to uh realign the trail through a small sixty-foot section to meet the two foot clear zone.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll do it again. Uh, I'll make a motion to accept the Parks request in regards to the trail realignment uh with the presented quota of eleven thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars with Anderson Brothers.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion or questions for Amber?
Why wasn't this caught when it was put in?
Um, there's a long history of dialogues on this one that's gone through wood sets and the city attorney and um so we were aware of it and now this is the resolution we are bringing forward.
Is this money on, still grant money that can pay for this?
No, this is out of the trail reserve.
So.
How much is in the trail reserve, Amber?
Um, currently about fifteen thousand.
So this would take us down?
Yes.
Yeah. Any additional comments? Joe?
No, I guess, you know, just uh another thing that was missed on it, I guess, the first go around. I don't know what to say at this point, but seems like maybe it should have been caught with all the discussion that happened on that trail and to come back and pay almost twelve thousand dollars again to do something we just did a year ago. You know, at the city's expense, you know, I don't know, I just feel like maybe um you know, with the parties involved, whether it be the contractor, the engineer company, whatever, that, you know, somebody would help step up to take some of this expense on um being that we hired these professionals to put this in for us a year ago. That would be just my takeaway on this, this was just, just done a year ago, so I don't know.
Okay.
Know if you have any feedback on any of those discussions, but.
If that's a route you'd like us to pursue, then I think we would need council direction, is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second on the floor though, so let's vote on this one. Um, any additional comments from council before I call the vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Um, next is pay application number three for the Gull Lake Trail. Uh, Amber?
I, I can just make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay application number four for height. Dick, I'm, I'm on the wrong one.
What?
Never mind. I'll make a motion to approve payment application number two for the uh Gull Lake Trail as presented.
Number three.
Oh, payment number three. Oh, this is, okay, payment number three, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries and then number eight is pay application number four. Oh, sorry, okay, pay application number four for city hall remodel.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number four for High Tech slash Gordian for the work completed through July thirty-first twenty-five for the total amount of ninety-three thousand, seven hundred, eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, next is the city hall remodel change order number two. Tom?
Uh, so I'm looking for approval for the change order for High Tech Gordian for extra work completed at my request. Change orders for some extra tuck point, extra tuck pointing that they've done, replacement speakers in the hallway. Um, they did a lot more painting in, in the hallway as well. Uh, the change order adds four thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents to the original contract. Copy of the signed change order is in your packet. With that, I would look for approval of that change order. Or questions if you have.
Um, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the change order as presented.
Do we have a second? Okay, are there, is there any discussion or questions for Tom regarding the change order?
No, is, is this about it?
Yeah, we're nearly done, so there's just a few small items left, uh, the blinds are motorized. Uh, so there's a warranty issue with the one, that one of them isn't working. Um, there's a back order on a part for some heat trace for the uh downspouts going out in front of the uh police doors. Um, so they'll be installing that at a later date once that equipment is available. Uh, let's see, that was a third thing, um.
Was, was all the concrete in the back?
The major stuff is done, it's really minor, uh, this is one of the smallest punchless I've ever had.
Right.
Uh, so it's very small.
So when they started doing the concrete in the back here, there wasn't any more?
The roof was by far the, the biggest issue, the roof and the windows and so those have been done, you've paid for those in the past, so we're nearly there.
And we're fortunate that the mold wasn't like.
Yeah, actually, um, I thought we had a lot more dan, we would find a lot more damage than what they did. Um, most of the damage is right here, but where the men's room going into there is, uh, they had to do some repair of some of the uh uh framing and stuff in there. Um, and obviously they've replaced some sheet rock uh in that area, otherwise um it's in good shape.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, next, um, we, this was brought up at our last council meeting regarding potentially changing the meeting start time moving forward. Um, we talked about it, I don't know how, if we want to make a motion tonight, if it's something we want to look to change starting next month or we want to just wait and start clean at the start of twenty twenty-six if uh there is appetite, but I don't know if we want to put a motion out there. I think the conversation was maybe starting at six.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to start these meetings at six if uh there's.
I'll second. Um, is there any discussion?
I'll, I'll second that. So now we got a second, uh, my, my piece of the discussion is we have a handful of committee meetings as well. Uh, the planning commission is starting at six P M. Um.
Five P M, Parks Committee.
Parks is at five. Want to move up since we got this box open?
Make sure that they have availability.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there is that thing called a full-time job. Um.
Well, let's, we have a motion to, well, you didn't specify when.
Exactly.
So.
So, just, no, I said six.
But.
Starting when?
In September or January?
Are we able, do, are we able to modify this year's calendar so we can move these meetings up this year?
Few meetings.
Um, I am.
We're good? Oh, wow, great, uh, next month.
Okay, so the motion is to change the start time of the council, well, actually we should, does that impact you at all, Tom, your schedule or bill, just?
No, I'm good.
Tom's just gonna take a thought today. It will from time to time, I've got another client that has night meetings that start at six and I've been able to start at six there and then get.
Get here by seven?
But we'll work it out for those rare situations and don't worry about it, it'll work out.
Are you sure?
Well, I, it just may be that I'm not here sometimes, depending on what the agenda is, but I try to balance what's going on in either place when I have those conflicts, it'll be okay.
Okay.
All right.
All right, um, any other feedback, thoughts from council? Okay, all those in favor of changing the start time, starting in September to six P M for the regular council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Um, and then we have uh our strategic planning session, so we did our February workshop with the full council and staff and our current strategic planning session is scheduled for September, I think tenth, but um, there is a conflict and we'd like to have all of us full participation because it's important to have everyone's voices. So it appears the date that would work for everybody is September eighteenth. So if that is so aligned, if we have a motion to move our strategic planning session to September eighteenth from eight to four thirty P M, we would entertain the motion.
I uh, I am the, the sole culprit, so I apologize, I have a conference every single year that same week and I didn't look at my calendar, so I own it. Um, I uh, I will make that motion to move the strategic planning session to September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five from eight A M to four thirty P M.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, oh, Joe.
Will you buy us something extra special for lunch that day?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so if we can get a, maybe an updated calendar invite on all of our calendars, so we don't forget, that would be great. And then our last uh amended additional item is to authorize acceptance of a sewer easement for Niswau Auto. And I think that's Tom again.
Um, this is kind of a complex issue, but I tried to boil it down to just a few minutes here. Um, so the actual request is to approve the city administrator to sign and accept the conveyance of an easement for a sewer step station connecting sewer line to the sewer main in the right away of Hazelwood Drive. Um, background, uh, the state has recently installed a new plumbing inspector for our area. He is interpreting the plumbing code dealing with our central sewer system step stations to require the in- installation of duplex pumps for all commercial step stations. Um, plumbing inspector from the state of Minnesota, Department of Labor and Industry will not allow the installation of a new step station for commercial purposes without a duplex pump setup unless there is clear processed easement to the, to the city or the area the step station will sit. Um, the city doesn't have a specification or a requirement for a duplex pump step station setup for businesses. This has been the case the entirety of the central sewer system's existence. Uh, with this, the easement is necessary to allow Niswau Auto to install a city specified single pump step station and prevent further delay of their project. Moving forward, if you approve this easement, um, until the state, uh, Department of Labor and Industry and the M P C A give the city clear direction, what type of step station is required or allowed. Uh, the city shouldn't require a legally processed easement be granted by the property owner to the city prior to starting construction of a step station. Uh, the city with this easement will continue to allow single pump step stations unless a duplex setup is required and that would usually be based on flow of, you know, size of the business. In this case, this flow is very small. Anyway, a lot of complex, uh, analysis, we'll go into that, but, uh, we have twenty years worth of these step stations installed. There's like a hundred and twenty of them. Uh, what, what the Department of Labor and Industry has done here would have, could potentially affect all of them, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, moving, I think this is the right thing to do and thank you to Niswau Auto for, uh, working with us in this. And, uh, I hope to make this as pain, painless for them as I can. Thank you.
Keith, yeah.
I just wanted to say, this is a pretty example of collaboration, so I want to thank Tom, city attorney for working on that, Stephen Planning, Tom. Uh, it's a longstanding practice. We had state inspector put the poor owners in this, uh, Auto and their crosshairs. Kind of had to retool things and those four folks ended up, uh, you know, their projects suffered, not as a necessary result of the city of Niswau, but I'd like to thank them for their patience and, uh, it's a, a good example how we were able to move this along as quickly as we possibly could. So, uh, I just appreciate the council taking a look at this.
Thank you for sharing.
Can I add?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Um, to that comment by Keith, Mike Deck, um, from Tom's department, uh, did a good job of putting all this all together, getting the specs, getting me what I needed to draft this. So thanks to Mike for that. Um, and Tom, did you say, have, have the granters signed this?
I believe we did, yes.
Yeah, okay, so it just needs the city administrator's approval.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, do we have a motion?
I, uh, would have, happy to be the one to do that and also thank you, Keith, for quarterbacking Tom and the rest of the staff too. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, authorize acceptance of a sewer easement for Niswau Auto as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion or questions for Tom? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, everyone. Um, next up, our council liaison reports. I unfortunately don't really have much this month. It's been busy with my businesses, so just trying to keep my head above water. Um, council members, councilmember Fraley, we'll start with you.
Well, as we all read in the, uh, consent calendar with Parks and Rec, uh, we now know that the killer system is officially kaput on the, uh, ice rink. And so there's no getting it, restoring it. Um, and they've been working on ideas of what can be done, uh, that, uh, for, to get Minnesota Hockey Day twenty twenty-seven here, so.
No.
We'll see.
Talk about that more about at the workshop. Councilmember, nothing? Councilmember Zahn?
Um, I did receive an email from, uh, one individual, um, over the weekend in regards to a request for us to change the state flag that we have flying outside City Hall to our original flag. Um, I am passing that along.
Yep.
And perhaps that's something that we can discuss at the
Next meeting?
The Town Hall, no, the strategic planning session.
Sure.
Yeah. That's all.
Councilmember Hall?
Uh, the only thing I'd have is Keith, when you get the information in on the search firms for a full-time city administrator, I'd like to see us call a special council meeting right away so we can get this process going, so we don't kick the can down the road any farther. Um, and so as soon as that information's available to you, uh, that would be great. I'd also just maybe ask for the council's opinion. Last time this happened, um, the, the firm that did it did kind of a, a study as I've been told, maybe on the current, um, condition. And I would like that information brought up at that meeting. Maybe that's one of the firms you're reaching out to. If it's not, maybe we could, just because they already have a leg up on it. They've already done all this work for the city, but I would like to see that happen as quickly as possible. Um, if possible, just because I don't, I don't want to wait one more month for this to take place. And then also, um, yeah, for the staff to, uh, to get that information. Maybe we can do a, a special council meeting too and talk about what we're going to do with the clerk position at that time, all in one meeting. That would be, I guess, what I'd ask.
Sounds very reasonable.
Sounds good. Um, all right, anything else from anyone? The upcoming meeting dates are on the calendar and a motion to adjourn would now be in order.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Sorry, Maggie.